And I am going to call to order the city council meeting November tenth, two thousand and twenty, and call on our city recorder Claudia to do a roll call.
Councilor Drapkin?
Here.
Councilor Garvin?
Here.
Council Geary?
Good evening.
Council Stassenz?
Here.
Councilor Peralta?
Here.
Council President Minky?
President.
And Mayor Hill?
I'm here. Again, welcome, everyone. I see that we have thirty-one on the line attending our meeting this evening. This evening, we're going to start with two proclamations, and the first proclamation has to do with Small Business Saturday proclamation, and I will present this proclamation. This is one that we are involved with on an annual basis. Whereas the government of McMinnville, Oregon celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty point seven million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety-nine point seven of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are represent and responsible for sixty-four point nine percent of net new jobs created between two thousand and two thousand and eighteen. And whereas small businesses employ forty-seven point three percent of employees in the private sector in the United States, sixty-two percent of small businesses report that they have need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of two thousand and twenty in order to stay in business. Sixty-five percent of small business owners say that it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regular return and start making purchases again, and three-quarters of US consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas ninety-six percent of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently owned businesses support their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact, and that ninety-seven percent of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas ninety-five percent of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop and eat at small, independently owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas McMinnville, Oregon supports our local small businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, Oregon, do hereby proclaim November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this the tenth day of November, two thousand and twenty. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville. Again, I think this was very well written, and I think it really supports the claim of the city, the chamber, and small business throughout our community. So I'm glad to be able to read that proclamation. We have a second proclamation this evening on climate change. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I just add one thing on to your proclamations so specific to two thousand and twenty, which is that just many of our downtown merchants and merchants in general are offering delivery service, pickup service, and trunk delivery service as well, from grocers to retailers of gifts and things of that nature. And given the state that we find ourselves in with rising case counts, I just want to add on that you can support your local small businesses while remaining at home or in your car, physically distanced, that there are lots of ways. And our merchants, especially our downtown merchants, are finding lots of ways to make their products available to the community without going to and densely populating the stores themselves.
Thank you, Councilor Drapkin. Very well said. And as I reported to the council last, at our last council meeting, the MEDP recognized the City of McMinnville and the Downtown Association for the McMinnville Dine Out Program, which was supporting local small businesses in the downtown core, primarily in the food and beverage area, but that's spread out all across the footprint of downtown. And we were recognized from a state perspective for thinking outside the box. And so I salute the MDA and their proactivity to do exactly what Remy has said, but also helping us keep our downtown vibrant and doing the things they need to. So, thank you, Remy. Our second proclamation this evening is going to be on climate change and climate action proclamation. And so I'm going to call on City Manager Jeff Towery to present.
Thank you, Mayor, and as City Council, I'm guest. As you know, we've had a number of engagements, primarily with students or recent graduates of McMinnville High School over the last several months. Ukiah and Sophia and a couple of their other colleagues are here at the meeting today. One of the things that we wanted to bring forward was a proclamation that identified some of the key areas where members of the community, as well as the city, could work on improving the status of climate issues in and around our community. We built that proclamation based initially on the resolution that students presented to you last year. And I will tell you that through Ukiah, and I believe with help of her colleagues, they made a number of critical observations about the proclamation. I think it's a much better proclamation for the feedback we have gotten from the students. I want to thank Ukiah and Sophia and their colleagues for being here tonight, and turn it over to the mayor to read the proclamation. We will look forward to an opportunity to provide the proclamation and hard copy to the students at some point in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. And again, I see both Ukiah and Sophia on the line. And so we welcome and recognize you being a part of this this evening. So I'll go ahead and read our proclamation on weather change proclamation. Whereas a global climate crisis is real, human-caused, and presents an unprecedented existential threat to humans and all living beings on this planet. And whereas according to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, we have until two thousand and thirty to drastically reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and take actions to begin to draw carbon out of the atmosphere. Whereas the residents of McMinnville have expressed their concerns around climate change and have called on the city to take action. Whereas the youngest members of our community are those who bear the greatest burden of interaction and are the ones among us to also exhibit the clearest vision of the urgent need for a rapid global response to climate change. And whereas the global call for climate strike was an opportunity for all community members of McMinnville to show their support for such action. And whereas the city supports the youth taking action in their participation in global climate strikes. And whereas the city fully supports the youth and their collaboration with the City of McMinnville to take action as a community to combat the climate crisis through the city's planning and development process and other innovative. And whereas furthermore, we encourage business owners and residents to join in climate action and other means of expressing support for the global movement. Therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby offer this proclamation of recognizing for prioritization of climate change and climate action. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this the tenth day of November, two thousand and twenty. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville. And so as Jeff has indicated, we'll get that proclamation out to you. And it further gives us cause to bring this up as we're working on our strategic plan. But we've immortalized this, so to speak, in this proclamation that's sent out by the city. So thank you, Sophia and Ukiah. Thank you so very much. It's good to see you on our call tonight.
And Mayor, Ukiah and Sophia would like to make just a couple of brief remarks for the council as well, if you don't mind.
Okay. Sophia, if you'd go first, then Ukiah, if you'd follow up. Sophia?
Hello, everyone. We just want to say, I would like to say for myself and on behalf of the other students that have been working on this, that we are very thankful that the city is recognizing this issue and recognizing that any step of progress is a big deal, and at the same time, recognizing that it's going to take a lot to really work on this climate crisis. And just want to express our gratitude for the steps that you have taken and our eagerness to continue working because there's still obviously so far to go. So, thank you, and thank you for your time.
Sophia, thank you very much. Ukiah?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we know we've been challenging you and ourselves a lot to move in a direction that is necessary for the well-being of our community. So like I and I'm sure my colleagues also like wanted to thank you for being open to that and for continuing to collaborate with us and educate us on how these systems work. So we really appreciate that, and we look forward to the next steps in being responsible citizens of this planet. So, thank you.
Thank you, you too. Okay, that takes us to comments from citizens. And this is the point in our program this evening. Anyone can speak on any topic other than a matter that is in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We're going to give each individual three minutes to address the council for a total of thirty minutes. And what I will do is if you raise your hand in our chat function or if you've let Claudia know that you want to speak, I know that we've received one email comment that's come from Michael Wells, and I see that Michael's on the line. So Claudia, are you aware of anyone that would like to speak to us this evening?
Yes, we'll start with Michael Wells, who's on Zoom, so we'll unmute his mic.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. And we've received your written testimony, Michael.
Yes, I would just like to repeat it. Speaking of climate change, I learned that fuel leaf blowers are awful for the environment. And seeing as how one is running at least twice a week right outside my window, I am constantly reminded of this. Running one for one hour is the same as running a modern car for eight hours. If I did the source of my concern in the email, and I would like to see if the city can enact a banner incentive to transition to battery or electric leaf blowers, which are far better for our home. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael, for your comments and for your email that's come to us in written form. Claudia, any other?
Yes, we have Tynan Pierce, who's on Zoom, so we'll unmute your mic.
Tynan, welcome. It's good to hear from you. We'll give you three minutes. Go ahead. Go ahead.
All right, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Good evening, everyone. It's going to be a couple of things. First off, it was awesome to hear from Ukiah and Sophia and to hear the climate change proclamation. That's definitely a step in the right direction. Look forward to hearing ideas about what kind of actions are going to be implemented and how we can all be involved in those and participate. And then following up with my daughter Eloise, two months ago, she spoke to y'all. And we just want to come back to the idea about who can we communicate with? And is there a best channel to proceed with the creative idea that she has around Trees for Bees, which was that suggestion that she had, and larger, just the concept that more community gardens? I was looking through the comprehensive city plan that you all put together. And on page sixty, there's actually a specific call-out saying that the City of McMinnville should encourage the development of community gardens on vacant city lands within multifamily housing developments as an energy-saving device. So it ties in really nicely with what Ukiah and Sophia were talking about. So again, just whoever is the best committee, or if that's a landscape committee, or if there's a specific person to talk to about getting involved in these things. I know Eloise is super excited. I know that Lucky is super excited, and I'm also very excited about that. And then as another follow-up, just in terms of that kind of communication and kind of like figuring out the best ways to be involved, I did hear back a little bit about my last comment for the Whitebird Clinic and the Kahoots Work, and seeing if anyone is interested in having a deeper dialogue on that. Sal mentioned that there was a committee that maybe Remy's on that would maybe be the best place to take those conversations to. But again, just looking for like more specific, like where to put that energy and where to have those conversations in the most effective and efficient way. So yeah, basically, like just following up on two points, one from Eloise and then one for myself. So hopefully, we can just, yeah, just wherever the best place to have those conversations are. Totally happy to participate in the best way.
Okay. And thank you so very much. And I think what I'll do is just turn it over to Heather, if that might be something that falls within the landscape or the affordable housing area. If you could just get back to us from a staff's perspective and run that through Jeff, and then Jeff and I will have an opportunity to talk about that at our next meeting so then I can specifically follow up.
Okay, I'll certainly do that.
Just real quick, that was just about the, which one was that about? So that sounds like that's about the community garden slash tree planting?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other one?
Well, go ahead, Heather.
What I was gonna say, two committees that these ideas could plug into. One is our Landscape Review Committee, which would be the community gardens and the Trees for Bees discussion. And that's run by Jimmy Fleckenstein. The second committee, I think, not knowing what the project is, but based on what you said Sal said, is probably our Affordable Housing Task Force. But I will follow up with you personally after the meeting, and we'll figure that out.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Claudia, any other comments this evening?
No, Mayor, that was it.
Thank you for the comments this evening. That's going to take us to item number four this evening, which is advice and informational items that are coming from counselors and committee members on their board and committee and board assignments. And so I'm just going to run around as I see you on my screen. And so Zach, you're the first one this evening. Go ahead.
Ranked by handsomeness. Let's see, my updates, McMinnville Community Media, no update. Landscape Review, no update, nothing, no meetings since our last meeting. Mac Pack. Additionally, we're taking the month off for some housekeeping items. So climate-friendly, I also am, not that it's a competition, the winner of the liaison with the most words in my committees. So I'm also on the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking Advisory Committee. And we've got a, we're between meetings. We've got a next meeting on the twentieth of November. We had an initial meeting to kind of just go over syllabus and general stuff, our charge, and that's at the state level. And then additionally, a city-level one, we're getting started on the Project Advisory Committee for the ninety-nine W from Northeast McDonnell Lane to Linfield Avenue Active Transportation Concept Plan, which will start on December tenth. And it's a planning-led program to look at that corridor and how we could look at active transportation concepts. So looking forward to getting started on that. It's kind of a short, compact timeline once it gets going. So I'll keep everyone abreast of that. Those are my updates.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go over to Adam next.
We came out of Whitehouse many years, and we'll have that. It should have been coming there about a week. And we had a week, as well as updated our minimum standards plan, stepped through some FBO stuff there. So we're still on schedule to hopefully have a draft form of that update by year's end would be the goal, to at least get through the minimum standards. And we closed out our Airport Commission vacancy application period. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, you, Mayor, and myself and Mike can get together and start doing interviews.
Thank you, Adam. Let's run over to Sal next.
Thank you, Mayor. Council of Governments, just a couple of reports. I've been, it seems like for about two months now, reporting on our executive director hiring period. We are meeting next week. Candidates are going to be coming out in the next few weeks. I will check in with staff about that to schedule something for the city with at least one of the candidates. And the Council of Governments Legislative Priorities List was released last week, so I'll send that to staff to be distributed to council for feedback.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Councilor Drapkin. Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our Affordable Housing Task Force meetings are the last Wednesday of every month. All citizens are welcome to join in those meetings. And we do, at the end of each meeting, have an opportunity for citizen comment or anything that anybody would like to say in regards to either what we're working on or what we could be working on. In our last Affordable Housing meeting, we had a guest visitor and an interesting conversation regarding group housing quarters and what that could look like for the City of McMinnville, but also what barriers were present. And as we just continue to explore any number of options to increase affordability, again, as a, or not again, but you know, as a committee, it's our job to explore all potential avenues that are current to increase affordable housing. It doesn't mean that we're necessarily cheerleading for one or another, but we do explore them. So we had a really interesting conversation. And part of that conversation, part of what came up, and I'm bringing it up here because I feel like it's, there's a relevancy for the community at large. Part of what came up was how access to public transportation informs us in terms of parking requirements, but also just accessibility in terms of living. And so this is a passive reminder to all the members of the Affordable Housing Task Force that one of your committee assignments between last month and this upcoming end of the month, which will be held on its regularly scheduled day despite its proximity to Thanksgiving, we will still be having the Affordable Housing Task Force meeting on the last Wednesday of the month. But one of the assignments was if you had not, as of yet, taken YCTA, if you hadn't taken our local public transit, to better appreciate how public transit would play or could play into your life, that you would take public transit. So by no means am I trying to overload or overwhelm public transit by suggesting this. But certainly, if you're a citizen of McMinnville that's interested in the conversation of affordable housing, and if you're interested in that conversation, as it may or may not relate to parking, I certainly encourage you to explore your public transit options. I think it's a very good and positive thing to do. I personally had a great experience. And if you want to hear all about it, I will be reporting back to the Affordable Housing Task Force the last Wednesday of this month at ten AM. Sorry, I apologize. Always my home dog in the back has to bark. And we also get regular updates in that committee as to what's happening with the housing authority and from our other nonprofit providers. And then the other thing I want to say that's maybe the most important thing I need to say right now is that our service providers for our houseless community are currently taking volunteers. First Baptist Church needs volunteers. You can email Erica, that's Erica with a K, at fbcmac.org. But check in with either your faith-based organization or your non-determinational service organization because as we move into cold weather, everybody needs support right now. And there's more good news from YCAP, but Kelly, that's really your purview. So I will step back and mute myself and my dog. Thank you. Am I up? I don't know. Where are we at?
Nope, you're up. Excuse me, I will unmute. Go ahead, Kelly.
Just as a follow-up for me, so you know, there's a group of us meeting on Thursday on dealing with the SRO stuffs, too. Yeah, I just wanted to briefly go through this winter shelter press release that I got, I think, yesterday. I've been trying to get it on my Facebook page. I, for some reason, can't copy it over. At any rate, very important, put it on, write it down right now, put it near your phone. YCAP's Coordinated Entry System is at www.nidoriyamhill.org, or you can call five oh three six eight seven one four nine four for information for referral to a shelter. Through sub-granting, SHOP funds, YCAP is helping partner two congregant shelters, increasing their number of beds for this winter. They're also continuing their police partnership program, which allows police officers and sheriffs to issue immediate motel vouchers for one to three nights, shelter for a person if they encounter them on the weekends or after hours and they're at risk of harm for the cold weather. On a daily basis, YCAP's outreach workers visit with hot meals, drop-in centers, and locations. All sorts of stuff there. Unfortunately, due to generous support, fortunately, due to generous support from federal, state, city, county, and Yan Hill Coordinated Care, YCAP is able to continue our successful motel shelter program through March of two thousand and twenty-one. I thought it was April, but they're saying March here. YCAP's motel shelter program provides shelter option to unsheltered medically fragile people who are at high risk of serious complications if exposed to COVID-19. The program serves many, and it's sixty-eight percent. Success rate of exiting individuals are getting into safe shelter. January twenty twenty point time count, five hundred and twenty individuals in Yan Hill County were living in a shelter or on the streets, places not meant for habitation. But there were only three hundred and twenty-six beds. This has increased to four hundred beds this winter, an increase of twenty-three percent due to YCAP's efforts and others. By working together, we're making progress in closing the gap between the need of community and resources to meet the need. Go out to YCAP's, I think they have a Facebook page, and I believe all of this is on there if you haven't received it already on your email, but it's very helpful information. And I don't know, I'm on the neighborhood periodically, and so I'm bringing this information over as I get it so that people can see it. It's also my Facebook site. Can't think of anything else, so.
Thank you, Council President. And Wendy?
Last but not least, right, Mr. Mayor? So I actually don't have a long update because the NEARAC meeting was canceled for this month of November. We're always on the first Wednesday of the month, but Heather provided us some fun numbers. In the last eighteen months, we've loaned, or in the grant program, we've given eighty-three thousand dollars, which all of the contracts have been now signed. And some of the work, a lot of the work has already been done. Some of the work is going to wait until the spring, painting and things like that that require the nice weather. But a lot of money infused through that, those grant programs over the last eighteen months. So that's exciting. So the next meeting will be the first Wednesday in December, so I'll have more to update after that meeting.
Thank you, Wendy. I've just got a couple of things that I'd like to report on. This last week, I had an opportunity to go with Jeff Towery and Jeff Knapp and myself and meet with the Visit Newburgh Group. go with Jeff Towery and Jeff Knapp and myself and meet with the Visit Newburgh Group, talking about tourism and how we could partner maybe a little differently, a little better, to represent the county in our activities of tourism as we're pulling out of COVID and what that might look like. And it was a great discussion of helping them get their feet solidly on the ground. And so that process continues to move forward.
Got good reviews too on Casey Kula's COVID stuff, so.
Okay. And then the other would be, I think I let you know a little bit, but we had our final public hearing on the West Side Road becoming the Truck Avenue instead of Highway 47. And ODOT, Jim West did a great job of doing some very in-depth statistical analysis when we're looking at safety, looking at cost. And we made a determination that it was not feasible to use West Side Road as alternative for truck routes going through Highway 47. And so I think that discussion has completely been laid aside at this particular time. Also had an opportunity last Thursday with the League of Oregon City's MWAQ, which is the Mid-Wilamette Valley Transportation. We had a strong discussion as we're looking at what is called the STIP, which is a state transportation plan, the monies of that. And we had four different items that we could look at the plan with. And the one that we're looking at is one that's called Enhanced, which gives more money to the local areas to put into unfinished projects, such as the Newburgh-Dundee Bypass, also the Aurora-Donald Interchange, McKay Road, and some work that's being done on Highway 22 down by Prairiedale and those areas. And so that is going to take more discussion, but that's the direction that we're going to be going on from that perspective. Kelly, I did not make Kelly's call today because we're gone on family vacation. I did read a little bit about the determination that we've seen such an upsurge in COVID statewide that the governors asked us to really curtail many of our small meetings of family. They feel that that's where we're seeing tremendous growth in COVID is from.
Wearing masks even when you're outdoors too, unfortunately.
Yeah, and Yamhill County, even though we weren't one that was earmarked by the state as one that was deemed to have to do that, the discussion, as I read it from Casey, was, you know, we are seeing such a spike that we want to get ahead of anything. And so again, it goes back to please be safe, you know, wear your mask, you're distancing and washing your hands are the things that are critical to us curtailing the increase from that perspective.
Yeah, and even think carefully about the holidays. Try not to invite, you know, more than one or two people from outside your scope if you're inviting them over for holidays. And even your family, if you don't see them a great deal, it's kind of hard to track what they're doing. Fortunately, we have one daughter coming in this time.
Okay, good. So again, those were some of the comments that were on the Yamhill County Leadership Call this morning. I think I'll go around to staff right now. Amanda, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Nothing to report.
Thank you. Jennifer, we're gonna have you a little later in the program, but anything that you'd like to share with us?
No, nothing to report at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Heather, we heard your great report. Anything else you'd like to share with the group?
No, not this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Scott, I know you're behind the scenes. Thank you, Scott. Claudia, anything from the Recorder's Office?
Yes, I actually do have something tonight.
Great.
The League of Oregon City is hosting their Elected Essential Workshop Training. There's gonna be six states that's available, so if any mayor or councillor is interested in signing up, you can do that with me. I'll send out this flyer that they sent us, and then I'll also include it in the agenda packet.
And I'll add on to that, Claudia. I've had an opportunity to go to that training twice, and I've found great value every time I've gone. And so any councillor that would just like to have a opportunity to go and refresher things on on city council, mayor's appropriate, it's kind of like Governance 101 is what I look at it.
Yeah, it's a really good one. I sat through it a number of times. I might be interested in sitting through it again, too.
Yeah, absolutely. What is the date? Six different dates, December 1st, December 2nd, December 3rd, 11th, 14th, and 15th.
And so those will be Zoom this time, I'm guessing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
First, second, and third, those wouldn't be available, though, right? Those are dates we already have blocked out, aren't they, for?
It's from 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m.
Oh, and we have evenings blocked out, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And then, last but not least, Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, on behalf of Kylie, just want to remind folks that the advertisement period is still open to accept applications on the city's new Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Those applications are open through the end of the month. And then finally, I'll just remind everyone that tomorrow is Veterans Day. City services, other than our 24/7 services, will be closed. I want to thank anyone who's on the call who's a veteran for their service. And for those of you who have veterans in their lives, I know you appreciate their service, and the city appreciates it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
And let's not forget that tonight is the Marine Corps birthday.
My Twitter feed was full of that. I follow a bunch of Marines, apparently.
247th year.
Hoorah.
I think 245.
Thank you. That takes us to our Consent Agenda this evening. We have two LOC C wine and full operation premises licenses. Anyone on the council would request to have an item removed off the Consent Agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
So move.
A second? It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal. All those in favor of ratifying the Consent Agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This, the Consent Agenda passes unanimously 6 to 0. Thank you. This takes us to one resolution this evening, and that's going to be Resolution 2020-65, a resolution appointing Debbie Hartman Ferry and Meredith Maxwell as representatives of the City of McMinville's Budget Committee. So Jennifer, I'll turn the, I'll turn it over to you to present.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So on behalf of the Audit Committee, I would, I have the pleasure of reporting out the results of the really, the amazing process of recruiting and having discussions with a number of really terrific candidates to the Budget Committee. It was, I know it was a pleasure for me to be in the room and hear the discussions and hear from these great members of our local community. And the Audit Committee had, as represented by Kelly and Scott Hill, just had a really tough choice in terms of making their recommendations. So just kind of the nuts and bolts of it, this is established in law that the Budget Committee needs to have the same number of people on it from the community as elected officials, and that makes up the Budget Committee. And folks are elected for a three-year term. And so this, the proposal is that the council approve and pass the resolution adding Debbie Harmon Ferry, as well as Meredith Maxwell, to Max Field, excuse me, sorry about that, Meredith, to our Budget Committee starting in January. So.
Thank you, Jennifer. And again, as Jennifer indicated, we had nine candidates for two open positions. And we did not take it lightly. We narrowed the field down and did a second round of interviews because we had, every single candidate brought some value to the table. And we were just looking at seeing what the Budget Committee needed and the strengths that we needed on that committee. So I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-65.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I think what I'm gonna do, I think Kelly moved and Sal seconded it because they did it at the same time. All those in, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-65 passes unanimously 6 to 0. We have both Meredith and Debbie on the line, so we can wave to them and welcome them on the Budget Committee. Again, thank you both for your passion, your desire to serve this community in what a couple of us feel is one of the best assignments you can have, and that's financial, telling the stories, the stories, story in a, not only a verbal way, but also in a numbers way. So again, welcome both of you. It's good to have you on our committee. Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to, for the record, let us know that we will not be having a second council meeting in the month of November in honor of Thanksgiving. And we will only have one committee meeting in December, which will be on the 8th. And the 4th Tuesday is in close proximity to Christmas. I do also want to recognize that Adam Garvin was re-elected to a four-year term on, from Ward 3. Kelly Minkie was elected to another four-year term in Ward 2. Chris Chenoweth was elected to take Wendy's spot in Ward 1. And I was re-elected for a four-year term as mayor. And that swearing-in will take place, the first meeting in January, on the 12th of January. And with that, I think that's everything that we have this evening. Thank you for your time, and be safe and be with your families. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Debbie. Congratulations.
Thank you.